Normally, I would start the Pledge of Allegiance, but maybe, maybe the team could come up and lead this meeting in the Pledge of Allegiance. Why don't you come right up here? This is by suggestion of Senator Fielek. Thank you, Senator. So why don't you guys dudes, come on up, face that way. We'll stand with you if everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. When you're ready. Okay, it's safe. You can, there's a flag over there. No problem. Yeah, you're fine. Go ahead.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, gentlemen. So we're starting this meeting, as you can tell, with some great positives. This is brought in front of us or suggested from Senator Fielek. Senator, thank you. We also have our senators and reps here, and we're going to recognize them in a moment. But we're here this evening to celebrate some success, and I understand we have coaches here. Dave, Derek, and Sean. So Dave Campbell, Derek Salisbury, and Sean Vento. If you, if you can tell me who would like to come up, we would love to hear your progress of how you got to the success. Do you mind? And they're looking at me like you didn't know I was gonna ask you to do this, did you?
Perfect.
Outstanding.
So I actually start off by thanking all the parents, players, supporters, and everybody that came out all summer and supported these boys in a district championship run. We started off beating Middletown, lost in Newport, two to one, and what was a heartbreaker, bottom of the sixth. On their home field, we were winning the whole game. That loss really, I would say galvanized the team and brought us together. From there, we rattled off, one, two, three. Well, it was Rumford in Rumford, Portsmouth at Portsmouth, Newport back in Bristol, and then Barrington in Barrington, and last Barrington at home for the district championship. So it was, it was a long summer of baseball, and these kids played awesome. It was my pleasure to coach. That's all I had written up.
Thank you. Good night, right? Go take a moment and recognize each one of you. Ben Campbell, number zero, Brandon Coria, number twenty-four.
Yeah, wait, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Come on up as you do it. Kayden McLaughlin, number eighteen. Cameron Salisbury, any relation to the coach? No? Number one. Gavin Labalita, I hope I said that right, number ninety-two. Jackson Adams, number ninety-nine. Jackson Case, number twenty-five. Jaden Larissa, number six. Jude Francis, number thirty-three. Logan Sheedy, number forty, I didn't say that right, did I? I hope I did. Number forty-four. Lucas Louis Batello, number seven. And Preston De Souza, number twelve. That is the Bristol Warren All-Star Team. Let's give them a big round of applause. I'd also like to recognize our senators and reps, and Senator Fielek, could you introduce your colleagues in state government? And before you do, I'd also like to recognize mom and dad, and grandma and grandpa, and your next door neighbor that brought you to all of these games and made sure that you were there and rooted you on. So nice job to all of you too. Senator Fielek, if you would.
As you know, we have our reps and senators here. From the Senate, we have Senator Lauria, Senator Yudafusa. We have Rep. Speakman and Rep. Knight. We're all here to acknowledge this outstanding achievement by the boys. And the reason why I wanted to get involved in acknowledging this outstanding achievement is because of the fact that I coached Little League Baseball for over twenty-five years in the town of Warren. And I know what it takes in terms of dedication and practice and parental support to be able to come to this occasion that we hear tonight. Couple of times I coached All-Star teams, and we didn't do a good job. So to see the outstanding job that these young kids did is truly amazing. And I was really caught back when, is it Logan Shee? Because when I was coaching, I was coaching against your father's team. Your father used to play against my team. So it comes full circle to see that your outstanding success is something that was passed down from one generation to the next, to the next. So congratulations. So without further ado, what I'd like to do is to have the House and my Senate members pass out the citations to each one of you. We can.
Okay. Ben Campbell, congratulations. Danny McLaughlin. Welcome. Jaden Larissa.
Curtis Salisbury?
Yes.
Gavin Francis? Congratulations. Cameron Salisbury?
Oh, he was one of the.
Congratulations.
Jackson Case.
One and.
Louis Batello?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Jackson Adams?
Oh, yeah.
Brandon Coria?
Congratulations.
Did anybody get there?
And possibly if we could get the coaches to stand up with the, the team. That way, other people can take pictures of the whole group. So once again, congratulations, and I know this evening's gonna be enjoyable and memorable for the rest of your lives. Congratulations.
And gentlemen, as a former assistant coach in Barrington Little League, I acknowledge your greatness.
Nice job, guys. Thank you. Nice job, Coach. Give it a second. That's fun. How old are the guys? Like thirteen, twelve? Outstanding.
Might start early.
It only gets better from here, right? Before we get into our regular meeting, I'd like to take a moment to recognize a couple of passings. One, with my colleague to the right, he and his family lost a niece yesterday, forty-two years old. Patricia Martin, sorry, Patricia Hawkins Martin. So Tony, our hearts go out to you and your family. Also, I'd like to recognize the passing of the town administrator's mom. Mr. Administrator, sorry for your loss. This council's heart goes out to you, and so does the town. It went happy, sad, but important to recognize important people in the community. So thank you. Before we go into our regular meeting, can I also get a motion to move F1 to the beginning of our agenda after we go through minutes and all that? Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Sir Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is A1 and A2. This is the town council meeting minutes of August 21st and the executive session meeting minutes from August 21st.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And we're moving forward to F1. This is the Bristol Police Department request for council support for the fifth annual Halloween trunk or treat event on Sunday, October 27, 2024.
Lieutenant?
Good evening. So this is gonna be our fifth annual trunk or treat. Prior to this, the last two years, we did it in conjunction with the Bristol Merchants Association. Prior to that, under Chief Lynch, we had created it during a time when there was COVID. And we want to keep the tradition going, police involvement with the trunk or treat. So we're doing it this year again downtown in conjunction with the Bristol Merchants. We've had really great success, fortunately with the town council's support. When I have asked for money, funds for certain things, candy, entertainment, traffic measures, safety measures, and event supplies. So thank you for last year, and I'm back this year asking.
Lieutenant, remind us the amount that we gave you last year, and we can check on it just so we're clear.
I did pull it. Last year, they requested five hundred, but the council did grant them a thousand last year.
I remember that.
The kids were very happy.
They were very happy. They found out about the council, yeah?
A lot of candy.
I believe that we approved the same amount this year.
So one thousand?
Yes.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, Tony, seconded by Aaron, for a contribution of one thousand from council contingency. Any discussion? I will. This is one of many reasons why the Bristol Police Department is so well thought of, not only in the town, but in the state. If you go past the police department right now, you will see a recruitment sign. And I know we all have challenges. The police departments around the country have challenges getting new recruits. But things like this are what make people believe what I know and my colleagues know and everyone here knows. It's an outstanding police department, and that does not happen by accident. And this is just one example of why it is. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. And thank you for your continued support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is Peter Alcardi Jr., sixteen Tobin Lane. This is a request for license to maintain a triangular shaped parcel at the intersection of Sullivan and Tobin Lanes.
Is Mr. Cardy here? Excellent. All right. So I'm gonna open the public hearing. I'm assuming you're here to speak in favor. So excellent. So is there anyone here to speak in favor? See, we loaded that right up. If you would, if you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Peter Alcardi Jr., and I live at sixteen Tobin Lane here in Bristol.
Welcome.
Okay, I would, I have petitioned you to take over the little island that separates Sullivan Lane from Tobin Lane, the license to maintain that particular little spot. Actually, my primary purpose is, and I have recruited some of my neighbors to replace the sign that's on this particular property, which belongs to the town. So I need your approval so that we can put up a new sign and kind of make it look a little better.
For clarity, that sign has been there since inception of the neighborhood. Is that right? And that was what, mid, late seventies?
Well, I've been there since nineteen eighty.
Okay.
So it's been there a good, not this particular sign.
Right.
But there was a sign there originally that was installed about forty years ago, forty-five years ago.
So this is you asking you and your neighbors to maintain it because it's town property and that sign is on it.
Exactly.
So you're asking for an okay to clean up the sign.
Not to clean up the sign, to replace it, to put it, to put in a brand new one.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Mr. Cardy?
The replacement of the sign, would there be, you be responsible for that, you and your neighbors?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There'll be no, no town involvement in the sign at all.
Thank you.
And I know there was no objections, and it was reviewed by the zoning, zoning officer as well, and no issues there. So that's all positive news.
The only issue I have is, well, and I'll check with, with Ed Tanner about this, whether we need a permit and whether we need to notify DigSafe because we will be excavating out the old sign and putting in a new one.
Any other questions for Mr. Cardy?
No. Thank you for the precautions.
Yes.
And I assume that there'll be like an approval process for the sign and everything like that, or?
So through our packet, Diane Williamson weighed in on it would be color and size and dimensions, such and so forth. So correct, Diane, please?
Yes. So as was stated, this was reviewed by the zoning officer in terms of the dimensions, and it, there's no issues with zoning. I believe in your packets, you have an illustration of what the sign will look like. And I believe that's what you're going forward with, the design that you provided us.
Right.
Is what's being fabricated.
Yeah. Once I get approval from you people, then I will notify the sign maker to go ahead.
Outstanding.
Yeah.
So based on the recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it.
Before you do.
It's a public hearing, isn't it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Yes, that's okay. Anything else for us, Mr. Cardy?
No, that's it.
Thank you. So I'm gonna ask for anyone else to speak in favor and against, and then we'll close the public hearing and take action from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor?
Just my apologies.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So this was a public hearing. Typically, we would have an actionable step here, but we're gonna do that right in this, just this agenda item right there?
Correct. And I believe we also wanna note that we will draft a license to maintain that Mr. Cardy does have to sign and put on the record before he starts any.
You concur, Andy?
Yes. I think you're going to authorize the license with the council solicitor to draft the license and authorize the town administrator to sign it and require it to be recorded.
That sounds like an outstanding motion.
So, so moved.
Yeah.
Or Tony, I think you were starting, I'll second your motion, yeah.
All right. So motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary?
Yeah, I think Mary was in there.
All right. So motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary, as stated by the solicitor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Sir Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C1. This is ordinance number 2024-16, Chapter 27, Taxation, Section 2715, Taxation Clarification System. This is to adopt a system of classification for taxable property in the town's first reading.
I make a motion that we adopt this as first reading?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, discussion?
I just think it's fantastic that we're taking the next steps on this taxation classification changes. I think it's gonna make a real difference for the residents that are living here, which is the main spirit, I believe, of this ordinance is to be able to keep people in their homes, right?
That is the goal, yes.
So I'm glad we're taking the next steps, but it looks good to me.
And then I know this is first reading. We usually don't do a lot of work during the first reading. The question I had was, in terms of the rates for each class, that'll be determined at, at what time? Is that right around budget time, or is that something that we determine before budget time?
We will do it, we will do it at budget time, but to, it's a great point that it's really important for the public too, is that that this puts in the vehicle to get it done, and then the next step is the conversation about what it actually looks like. So we have owner occupied, non-owner, excuse me, non-owner occupied and commercial. So this is first reading again. Second reading is when we have more in-depth discussion, but these are great points and clarity for the public. Mary?
Yes. And so I know we've talked about this, it seems like, for such a long time, so I'm glad it's here. I just had, when I sat down to read this, the section A, under A, 1A, so it's the third paragraph. I just felt like it was overly sort of ominous, you know, like too much, to me, it was like too much. And having to every year between a certain date fill out a form that you still own or occupy this, especially if it's, you know, something that you, your family, you have owned for years. And I just wasn't sure if there's a way to simplify that a little bit. To me, it just seemed like too much to do that on an annual basis. And I think that, I mean, if it changes hands, I would imagine like if, I mean, you have life estates, other things in here, like, isn't the town hall notified of certain things, if the deed were to change and you were no longer the owner of it? I mean, I just don't know if there's another way, because this just struck me as too much.
Michelle, I know the question was pointed at you. Before you answer it, could you give the background of what Mary just asked? Because not necessarily everyone has got this in front of them.
Yes. So we're in the ordinance right now. We're asking that every resident file the application to receive the resident tax rate annually. And our application period is January 1st through March 15th. It is cumbersome. It's, it will be cumbersome for our office as well as the residents to file this annually. It was something that I discussed with the solicitor's office at the time that the ordinance was written. We did go back and forth a little bit. I did review, there are four other towns in the state that have these tax rate tiers. And most of them do give a little more time between, they don't file annually, some are three years, some are five years. There were, another one does require the applications annually. But this is certainly something that we can discuss before the next.
Yeah.
For the second reading.
Yeah, I would appreciate that because I think either that, like I said, something that comes in with deeds or whatever, or every three to five years. Like I just thought every year, especially for some of our older residents, that's just a lot. And if you miss it, it makes it sound like, oh my God, you might, you might be subject to a fine, you know? And I think we would, I think, three years or five years, like just a recertification period, where it doesn't have to be so kind of scary, stupid thing, you know?
And we do, you're right, we do get notified when new deeds are filed, when, when properties transfer. That, that wasn't our main thought. Because yes, those, once those properties transfer, they will be notified that they either need to, the new owners either need to apply or they're not gonna get the tax rate. It's, it's more those that don't notify us. Maybe they still own their house here, but they own another house elsewhere, and they changed their residency. They, they don't always notify us that they've moved.
I think the, one other thing that just is in my head here, and it is something that I brought up, I brought this up before, when we discussed this initially. And I think you, it is addressed in here in terms of the various ways you can be a property owner, you know, life estate, et cetera.
Right.
But what I don't know that I think is in here is, I'm not sure everything is, I'm not sure if every single scenario was covered. And so I know that when we discussed it before, it was kind of like, well, it's a work in progress, we might have to change it. I'm just wondering if there shouldn't be something in here that would, you know, like provide, like either, either with you, like an appeal to you or to the tax board, you know, the review board, that is, like extraordinary circumstances could do, here's this process.
I think.
Well, is it for all of them? I mean, I know there's some.
So it is listed that they can either come to me or they can go before the board. But I, I think what you're referring to is something that we decided to leave off of the ordinance that we would kind of have policies and procedures for our department of certain scenarios and how we would handle them. I don't think we decided that it would go in the ordinance, but we can certainly.
Well, I don't have it as much of an issue. It doesn't go in the ordinance, but I'm not sure. Like I think I remember reading the section that you're talking about, and I thought to myself, I don't think that answers my question of what I was thinking in my, in my head. However, I think that if there's, and maybe I missed it, but you know, a lot of times in state legislation, it will say, you know, that the department will make the rules and regulations, you know, and as to the process. And I think that might be helpful to say in here if we're not gonna put all of those details in here.
I think that you're right, the verbiage is not in there that.
Yeah.
That we would make the.
I think that that should be in as well.
So just for clarity, so we got here, this council and administration wanted a three-tiered tax system. And the goal behind it is to have more flexibility. Currently, you may know, whether you are residential or commercial, the rate is the same. This allows for more flexibility. It also allows for, and this particular conversation that just happened was talking about owner occupied. So you live in your home, this is a possibility of maybe controlling the rate a bit more for owner occupied. More specifically, the question was, we're asking, you must say on a yearly basis, attest on a yearly basis, at least that's what this ordinance says, that you actually live there and you are a resident of town. And the conversation that Mary just had with Michelle says, do we need to do it every year? Can it be every five years, right? The goal is to make sure that, that if you are a resident, that you take advantage of hopefully a lesser tax rate. Nothing has been set in stone, but we want to make sure that the people who are supposed to get it, get it, and people who are not, don't, simply put. So any other dialogue at the moment?
I just had a quick question from Michelle. With the tax system in place, is there a way to run a report to find out who's, who's changed, who hasn't changed? And kind of cut a lot of that, having to report every year, or?
The way this.
I'm just trying to see if we can make it simpler.
The way this system is set up now, we don't have that, but I, I think after the first year, once we do get the applications in, the process will be a lot easier going forward. We will, we'll, we have the ability to put in the system who's a resident and who's not, and then we'll be able to print reports from there. We just don't have that data at the moment.
No data, okay.
I do think, you know, and I think you, you understand, you know, like, a lot of the people that we're trying to help, some of our older residents staying in their home, are the ones that are gonna be the most active in, you know, like putting their estate into something, whether it's a trust or their kid's names, whatever the case may be. And I think we want to make it like simple process that is easy for people to follow. And so, like, we'll go back to do this, to make any changes, if you can just kind of keep that in mind, I think.
Of course. Thank you.
I think it's also worth saying for all of us here, the goal is not to figure out a way not to give you this discount. It's, it's so you get it. That's, we want to make sure happens here. So if you're a resident that, and again, nothing is set in stone for dollars, but that isn't, that's the intent that this council's had so far and administration.
And resident, by the way, is voting. Yes. You know, as being a voter here. So people could be residents part of the year, but they may be official residents of another state for tax purposes, and they would be voting in that state.
So second reading is typically where we have more dialogue about this. We usually don't have that much discussion on first, but this was important to clarify. Any other discussion?
Yes, just if I know, Councilwoman Perella mentioned, you know, three or five years. I think five year would be a long span of time. If anything, I would say, you know, let's shoot for three.
Excellent. Anything else on the council?
I was just concerned, Michelle, with the, when setting the rate, and we get to that point, I think it's really important we understand what those impacts are of the different rates, especially when we're setting that commercial rate, because we definitely don't want to drive out businesses. And we just want to understand like how it affects and how it, how it relates to other municipalities and that are sort of, you know, dealing with the sort of same size and comparable. So we're gonna need, probably need some of those scenarios and cases to be able to look at coming down. So is that something you're preparing to?
Yes, that'll be ready, ready for budget time. Yes.
Excellent. And the other thing, Michelle, as long as Tim was on that point, it was raised, I think, to Tim and I in another venue that, you know, increasing that commercial rate might pass on some cost to renters and, and things like that. So if there's any additional information we can get about that, that would, I think that would help us in our decision making as well. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is E1. This is a three-month review for Robert McNeil, McNeil's Sign Collaborative. This is doing business as the East Bay.
Yeah.
Yes.
C2. I'm sorry.
Everybody's looking to go home.
The next item on the agenda is C2, ordinance 2024-17, Chapter 21, Police.
The next item on the agenda is C two. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, chapter twenty-one, police article two. Probationary police officers, section twenty-one dash forty-one. This is appointment qualifications of applicants. And this is to change the age qualification from twenty-one to eighteen. First reading.
Motion to approve first reading?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve first reading, discussion?
Just had a quick question for the chief. Um. I know many years ago, there were. You know, there, when, when people were coming on at this age, for example. You know, we had a very big bill for college. And then kind of now is like either finishing, you, you know, the requirements for the. Older group is like they have some level of college classes, either a associate's degree, whatever. Um, do you, do you, how do you see this going? Will we be paying for most of the college education?
Unfortunately, um. Councilwoman Per- Perella, that's an unfunded state mandate, uh, that's imposed onto municipalities, uh, through. Legislation that was passed in the general assembly. And that is, you know, a burden for all municipalities. You know, I can tell you that um, when President Barack Obama uh did a study um on policing. And that study, it circled around educated police officers. And getting an officer in education drastically reduces liability for everybody. Whether it's lack of use of force, professionalism, dedication. And so there are huge benefits by, you know, bringing younger folks into the career of policing. And properly educating them, you know, they get acclimated in academia, they go to college, you know, with, with. I don't want to say civilian folks, but they go to college and, and they get to form relationships with other people. They learn different perspectives. May, maybe different than policing. And um, as an adjunct professor at Roger Williams University and, and other colleges. Uh, the benefits uh are clearly uh beneficial to any community in the state to have. A well-rounded, educated uh police force, but certainly bringing someone in at, at a younger age. Uh, certainly we could be cutting into, you know, a four-year uh, uh, college-educated officer. And, and that person's intent was to garner a degree, that burden would be on, on, on to the town. Um, my, my goal really is to keep pace with other law enforcement organizations. As you all know, recruiting police officers is the huge, one of the largest challenges that we have as police executives. Unfortunately. The younger generation, the millennial and the Gen Z generation, uh, are not accustomed to working nights, holidays, weekends, being ordered back. Uh, it's just a growing trend that we're seeing.
Chief, if you could have seen every person here with a knowing smile when you said that, it was kind of funny.
You know, I wish.
Regardless of your thought, everybody was smiling when you said it.
I'd rather put it out how exactly how I feel and, and why, why we're doing it rather than to give some, you know. Uh, sugar-coated answer, you know, uh, to the council. I need to keep pace, you know, Rhode Island State Police are taking the lead. Some of their candidates that were in their last class were certainly under twenty-one. Uh, it's all about maturity, you know, it's about reach, reaching a bigger diverse population of candidates too, you know, in policing. Someone goes and goners a, a four-year degree, I'll be perfectly honest with you. They come out of, you know, a major university, there's law school. There's uh employment opportunities that don't start out as low as policing. Well, I found policing to be very rewarding and uh financially accustomed to my family. Uh, there are better paying jobs out there. We are no longer in the driver's seat when it comes to um applicants. You know, we have an opportunity, we have a lot of young men and women that are going into the military, they join, you know, the guard service. Um, they're not full-time into the military, they go to, I graduated high school at seventeen, you know, and. Uh, they're going into the military, they're getting their boot camp and they're, you know, whether they're Army, Air Force or, or Coast Guard Reserve. And we have the opportunity now to get that candidate before he goes to, you know, o- other areas of employment. Or somebody that goes to junior college, they may be nineteen or twenty. We're losing that candidate to the other police departments. And at the end of the day, we ultimately, you know, there's a testing procedure that's also in the, in the charter, there's written exams. There's i- interviews, um, oral interviews, there are psychological examinations. And then there is a very robust uh police academy, which is run by the Department of Public Safety. So there are a lot of checks and balances before you bring in, just, you know, thinking that there's, you know, somebody may not have the maturity or the skillset. It all has to do with the background and, and, and the employment process and the recruitment process. And, and I'm trying to capture that nineteen and twenty-year-old that we're currently missing out there and. Uh, to get the best for the Bristol Police Department, you know?
So I just, just to be clear, I don't disagree with anything you've said. I just, um, I've been on and off the council for many years and. I remember at one point in time, the whole college thing was a big expense on the town. That's the only reason I ask that question.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree, of course, that, you know, the better educated, the better police department that we have, I, I totally agree with all that. I just was. Curious, you know, like, it may not have an impact for a long time, but there potentially is some, but I mean, we don't have a choice because. People don't want to do the jobs any longer.
Yeah.
And I think where you're also losing people, I mean, I'm just using an example of a. Member of my family, when they were in um criminal justice at Roger Williams. I was encouraging this person to go and at least do an informational interview with you guys, you know, with the police department. And they're like, no, 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 if I get the job, I wouldn't be able to start except still in school. Like, you're not gonna get your first shot, you know what I mean? So. I think if you can encourage people to do that too, who are in those programs, because. And we've been through a bad time where a lot of people were in criminal justice, they didn't even want to, no longer want to be a police officer, you know, so. I just want to be clear, I wasn't trying to like, you know, say we shouldn't do college, I just wanted to like, be clear that that, you know, that. Eventually will be an issue down the road for us potentially.
Yeah, if I could make one additional point to that. So you'll get to see that number with the budget presentation. The administrator and I put that tenant in the last collective bargaining agreement with the police department. So in January, I send out, uh, by contract, I send out two notices to the police officers. So if you were in tel- in. Intent on taking a college course, you have to notify my office by the end of January. So I can bake that number into the budget. So not to say that it's gonna take money away, but when I present the budget, that's a known and measurable number. Um, of the officers that have signed up to take college courses and, and they're committed to do that. So we do properly budget for that. Um, and that was something that we added to the collective bargaining agreement so that we don't get caught behind the scenes and. Everybody signs up for a course and all of a sudden it's not enough money, you know, to pay for it.
That's good, thank you.
Any other discussion from the council?
Just, excuse me, just briefly, I, Chief and I talked about a little bit about the retirement age. You know, if someone comes on, on board at the age of eighteen, you figure twenty years of service, you know. Uh, is the minimum that they can serve, obviously defaults on the mers, so that is, doesn't weigh in on the town. However, OPEB would be one of those things that we talked about and certainly. Long-term, it could weigh in because since we're responsible for the medical into retirement.
That's a good point. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Sorry for skipping over you. The next item on the agenda is E1. This is a three-month review for Robert McNeil, McNeil Design Collaborative, doing business as the Northeast Golf Company. Bristol Golf Park ninety-six Broad Common Road, and this is a review of the Class C liquor license.
I was happy to see that there were no violations or issues. So it's fantastic news and uh. So uh, congratulations and I'll make a motion to receive and file. Chairman, on this one? Think we're just, it's just a review, right? We're receiving filing?
I heard you, I. Andy? Hi, Andy.
Are you going to, I mean, the question is, um.
It's just a review.
Was there, yeah, I mean, it wasn't pending anything further to my knowledge.
Nope. Um, you also have, you know, their regular, their renewal for next year coming up soon as well.
Um, I don't know if you want them to appear for that. Um, or not, I mean, obviously it's a public hearing on all renewals.
So I see no need myself. Um, Mr. McNeil is here. I'd like to echo Councilman Sweeney's um statement is that, thank you, first for showing up here tonight. Believe it or not, that's actually a big deal, right? So, and look at all the knowing smiles again, yeah, so, so thank you for that. Second, thank you for um, uh, keeping your word and that there was no issues over there. It's exactly what you told this council. It's exactly what happened. So again, thank you, so. Um, so there is no additional action I don't need unless my colleagues believe otherwise. I don't see why you'd need to come back in front of us. Obviously, if there was an issue, that's a different story, but there hasn't been, so thank you. So receiving file.
Seconded.
Okay, so that was made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Continue, best luck.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E two. This is the six-month review for the Bristol Harbor Inn, doing business as BHI LLC. Two fifty-nine Dame Street for the dancing and entertainment license.
I'm aware of, uh, Chief, there's no, there's no issues there, correct?
No issue, sir.
Okay.
Based on my recommendations and uh, the good, uh, no issues, make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Andy?
Second.
I think there was something.
Solicitor has a question for us.
There were never a loud music, but they.
I was gonna say, it's, there were a number of loud music.
Yeah.
Items.
Is it like they were just a little past, they didn't hit the decibel level, is that it? But they were disruptive to the neighbors?
There were uh calls to the police department relative uh to loud music, officers uh viewed that. Um, and it was no way was it anywhere near what they would determine to have to go back to the station for a noise meter. Yeah, so when I read the report, Chief, it didn't, you guys deemed um, uh, not to approve you in your recommendation, as you said to continue with the approval. So, okay, all right, just making it clear for the statement, Andy, it's, the report indicates you go ahead and approve.
I understand that, but I was just saying that the question was, oh, there's nothing at all, there is actually something. But notwithstanding it, the recommendation was to approve.
And I mean, when you, and when it says it was playing past eleven P M, for example. Um, you know, it's, I guess how far with it, you know, like when you went down, they said. Supposed to end at eleven, they ended it, is that what happened? And um also on the Sunday, I think there was a thing about Sunday. It was, um, you know, they didn't, they didn't have the ability to, they weren't licensed to have something on a Sunday, is that correct?
The clerk and I have been discussing, um, obviously we have met with the, I've met with uh the condominium president uh from Stone Harbor. And I've been working uh with the clerk on uh the appropriate times that they're allowed uh to have uh. Music venues. There was a discrepancy on what folks thought it, it finished earlier than it really had, that they have the same. Uh, entertainment hours as all of the other business, subject to correction by, by the clerk.
Right, and the ordinance does state that um any noise can continue, that as the same as Monday through Thursday until ten P M is, that's what's noted in the.
Yeah, I was just like, I'm just looking for the part about the Sunday, that they didn't have a dancing, entertainment license for the Sundays and there was one incident on a Sunday.
Mary, are you looking to, what, what are we trying to get to? Are we looking to not continue with the approval or do you want to run something or?
No, no, I'm just trying to be clear about what it is that, that is in the uh, the details here.
So there's a little gray in there because the town ordinance does allow um entertainment to cease ten P M. On nights from Sunday through Thursday and midnight on Fridays and Saturdays. And quite honestly, the. The uh ordinance does need to be cleaned up a little bit because there's nothing on the ordinance that states anybody needs to have a one-day Sunday dancing and entertainment licenses. And the council has been issuing licenses that strictly say Monday through Saturday. Although the ordinance does allow for entertainment until ten P M, so it is something that needs to be considered and cleaned up. And reviewed by the council at some point.
Yeah, cause I mentioned there's been other Sunday weddings in the past or events, you know, at, at that time, so.
All right, so clarity, there were calls to the police department.
Yes.
The police, the, the officer showed up, the issues were. Uh. Well, the concern was addressed, but it wa- it didn't rise to the occasion to come back with a noise meter, is that correct?
That is correct. It was one night where a wedding, uh, we believe the father of the bride might have asked the band or the DJ to play one more song. Um, they did that and the police were notified and uh it was over by the time that the officers reached the tent. Nothing that would have raised a violation for me to present, you know, to the uh license holder. Or to bring anybody forward for any type of a show cause hearing to the council.
So just from my point of clarification for myself, a- at this point, it says current dance entertainment license restrictions. Monday through Thursday, Friday through Saturday, and I know the clerk already, um, you know, addressed some of this. But at the current, at the present time, there is really no permission to hold dancing on Sundays. If I'm reading this correct.
The ordinance does allow for Sundays, although the past practice of the council has not been to issue the licenses for Sunday, any license for Sunday. The council does have. A petition for Sunday dancing and entertainment licenses, however, it is not listed in the town ordinances. How those are to, the procedures for those, um, the only time that the council has ever really used the Sunday one-day. Entertainment license is for nonprofit use, um, for special festivals or organizations that, that one might have. And they also use it for um, Sunday dancing and entertainment licenses on the third of July. When the third of July falls on a Sunday, you require those establishments to obtain a one-day Sunday dancing entertainment license. The Sunday one-day dancing entertainment licenses are fifteen dollars. Per license, which exceeds the actual amount of the dancing and entertainment license of the hundred dollars if they were to get one for every Sunday. So um. It is something that does need to be cleared up in the ordinance.
I'm just wondering if in the purpose of, I, I know you can't, you know, these entertainment and dancing licenses are hard to. Deal with because it, like one way or the other, but. If it's like an event at a particular venue, like, I mean, you do the, like. Opening it up to everybody or no, but in this particular case, somebody's gonna be having an event at this location. You know, and it has to be on a Sunday, can we just give them that one, you know?
Not without council approval, as, as the practice has stand, it's not listed in the ordinance. And I'm not sure that it's actually enforceable if it's not in the ordinance.
I don't think it happens too often. I mean, it looks like there was just one instance here. And Captain Wanzu says, like, I don't believe there's a. Um, I don't believe Bristol Harbor Inn is licensed for Sunday. Uh, dance and entertainment activities. I mean, mostly events are like on a Saturday, probably a Friday, anyway, you know.
Majority of the events are, yes. The majority of the events normally happen on the weekend, not necessarily on Sundays.
Right.
With entertainment.
So my, I'm sorry. So my question would be first to avoid. Issues, whether it's with the police responding there on a Sunday and go, or anybody else challenging this. How can we clear this so that they can in fact hold entertainment on Sundays?
I, I think there's two separate solutions. One is the long-term one of, of amending the ordinance. To wrap it into the regular licenses. Obviously, the Sunday is a, is a holdover from the blue laws and the days of the Plymouth Colony, probably.
No, I don't think it's that old.
I, I bet, I bet it would be. I bet I could find you a seventeenth-century ordinance prohibiting it on the Sabbath. So um, I think that, that's one. And then the second thing is to realize to the council always has, within the overall limits, the council always has. The right to set lesser times. And fewer days and so forth on any particular license. I think just to make it clear for the meantime is that the applicant should make sure to come for a Sunday license. If, I don't know if anyone's here today with it, but they should come for a Sunday license. Um, or any establishments for the moment, they should apply for those Sunday licenses um until we can amend it.
I mean, there's only a couple, I haven't seen this come up before, but I mean. There's only a handful of wedding venues and things like this in, in town. And it's been very successful in bringing people to the community, so it seemed to me that, I mean, people are booking these. Places for the most part, six, twelve months in advance, so. I think if the uh venue would just say, okay, we're gonna need to submit this, even if it's like a year before.
Right.
Um, for that Sunday, like we would be offset with that.
Right, and I think we should amend the ordinance so that, you know, the council has that authority to do it, and then, you know, you may set. Different lower hours depending on the particular location, you may say, well, for this location, as you have here, midnight is not acceptable.
Right.
Eleven P M is the time. Or you might say, you know, on Sundays, ten P M or nine P M, you would set specifics for particular ones depending on the. Location.
Yeah, I think that would be like, I mean, if, I just don't think the venues realize it, or else they would be submitting it on behalf of the, on behalf of these events. Um, so I just think we need to let them know and if we need to adjust this, and I would say probably. Sunday through Thursday, the workdays, the next workday, we have ten o'clock in there anyway.
Right. In, in fact, we might even change it to correspond closer to the liquor license things that talk about. One time limit for Sunday through Thursdays, another time limit from Friday through Saturdays. And including Sundays before Monday holiday at a later time.
So should we ask the clerk to contact the business and come back for a Sunday license? To avoid any future issues?
Well, I think if they have something coming up in the next couple of months, they should come in for a Sunday license, yes, just to.
So this is timely conversation. The clerk had reached out to me today and brought all of this. So this is timely conversation, the clerk had reached out to me today and brought all of this to my attention, so council could have more, not tonight, but it worked out perfectly, um, with the goal of, I, I think all of us can agree that we're not looking for the fifteen dollar fee on the Sunday. Uh, like, the idea behind it was, uh, there was a, a day of quieter time, and in special instances, we were saying yes to it. As the, uh, solicitor pointed out, the council has the ultimate authority. When we say yes to a dancing and entertainment license, then we can, we don't have to include a Sunday. Just because it's there doesn't mean we have to do it, just like we do with liquor licenses. But to Tony's point, I think we should reach out, if you would, Madam Clerk, and just remind this particular applicant because of this whole dialogue. Um, and as already stated, all, um, of our establishments, if Sunday dancing and entertainment is something that you, uh, wanna do, and currently, uh, one day license, a Sunday license is required, uh, but we will look into, uh, this council will have more dialogue about changing the ordinance. So, uh, we had a lot of dialogue, did we ever get a motion to, uh, receive and file on that, and with these actions already stated?
I think I had made, I think it was this.
I got Tim with the original motion, but I, I didn't hear a second.
All right, so Tim made the motion, Tony seconded it with, uh, with the request to the clerk to reach out to this, uh, particular applicant.
Mm-hmm.
They should reach out to all the app, all of the, uh, license holders because particularly these wedding venues and others. I mean, the other places are pretty good at coming in for Sundays, if they're having a special event or whatever. Or we can reach out, as you just said, Mr. Chairman, to all of our dancing and entertainment license as a reminder. Particularly these, I mean, this isn't like a last minute kind of thing, because these people will know way in advance that they're gonna hold their thing on a Sunday.
Right, or could they make the, uh, re, request to the council to add the Sunday to their license with specific time restrictions, so that way they're not coming in every single?
Yeah.
I mean, we could, I think we, I think.
Short term, one day, long term.
Yeah.
Then we can talk about each.
Madam Clerk, I think that's a nice suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
What is the motion, Tim, I, I mean?
To go home.
At some point.
Was receive and file, uh, along with, uh, asking the clerk to reach out to this particular applicant. I think we can amend it again if everyone is amenable to it, that we just reach out to all of our establishments with dancing and entertainment to remind them that, uh, this discussion that we've already had, I don't have to restate it. Are you okay with that?
I am.
I heard that as a motion, is there a second to that?
Yes, I did.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F two, this is Dave Scarpino, chairman of the Bristol Christmas Festival, and this is in regards to proposed location change for the Christmas festival to Unity Park on December seventh and the eighth.
Hi, Dave.
How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Thank you for, uh, giving me some time, Dave Scarpino, nine thirty-two Hope Street, but I, as Melissa said, um, I am representing the Bristol Christmas Festival Committee, and we, this is really for informational purposes. I think it was in February or early March, I came before you to say that our working plan was to have our festival at the Common, moving it from the Burnside Building, and to use one of the indoor venues, whether it was Reynolds School, Our Lady Mount Carmel, St. Mary's, um, for our indoor activities. Unfortunately, those plans didn't pan out, so we've been working over the last six months now and put together a package that would have the festival itself up at Unity Park and have all of our vendors at the First Congregational Church.
Dave, would you take a moment? We have a couple of holiday slash Christmas celebrations. So just for clarity for everyone, we're not taking the lighting from Hope Street and moving, right?
The council was very clear on that, we are not.
Right, but tell everyone what, specific events, give an example, if you would.
So December seventh, we will hold our festival from eleven A M till six P M. Also on the seventh, we will hold our tree lighting from, if the program will start at five thirty, the tree lighting will be at six in front of the Burnside Building. So that will, so Hope Street will be closed, we will do it, I would call it, we're going back to our vintage celebration.
And then the event that you is, is we have, uh, you have vendors and, correct?
Yeah, and the last piece is Sunday, the eighth, we're gonna be there from noon till six, also up at Unity Park. So we're bringing basically everything we had last year, our entertainment will be there, our food vendors, we have about twelve, fourteen food vendors, we have our craft vendors, we have children's activities, um, and the purpose of this is really to bring the town together, bring some joy to the season, um, and to help the local businesses. Now, that became a little bit tricky, and I'll just spend a minute on this, became a little bit tricky because we're moving a little further out of town. And you know in town, going from Unity Park down to Thames Waterside, that's a really long walk. So, uh, we've been working with the B M A all summer and wanted to make sure that they weren't negatively impacted by the move. We've now worked out that we're gonna have some Newport trolleys in operation, they will be decorated, they will be, uh, playing music, uh, easy signage, so people can move around and about, not only to the businesses downtown, but to what I call the iconic venues, they can go to Harrischoff, they can go to Blythewald, they can go to Linden Place, they can go to St. Michael's. So we want them to enjoy all of the town, um, even though we are home based, um, at the Unity Park.
I just had, I just have a comment.
Sure.
Um, and this says, this is just my own disappointment. Um, I mean, I'm disappointed that it couldn't be worked out, the original plan. I mean, I love Unity Park, I think it's great, but, you know, to stay with their, with four churches around the Common and other public buildings that we couldn't find an indoor venue, like, I mean, that, that really bothers me. It's nothing that you guys have done, it's just, it's very surprising and very disappointing that this is what we're doing to, um, have this celebration. I mean, I think it was great to move it from like down, I mean, I think everybody likes it downtown, but it, it, there are issues down here. The common idea was great, and, um, I'm not sure if for the future, what we can do to help facilitate the use of some of those, um, places because it, I mean, we're not talking about people destroying, I mean, you know, most of the vend, the most of the inside stuff of your vendors, it's like a craft fair, basically is what it is. And, um, you know, so I just would like to just put that out there, because when I read, you know, I, I mean, I'd heard about this, and when I saw it, I was like, man, this is unbelievable to me, in some ways, you know, so. Um, thank you for persevering.
Look, look, um, listen, I was deeply disappointed also, we didn't get First Congregational Church until the latter part of July. So we were sitting mid-July with no place for vendors and trying to figure out how to put everything into Unity Park. It, it just wouldn't have worked because we have safety and, you know.
Yeah, of course.
We have issues that we still have to talk to, uh, you know, Bristol Police Department with, after we, you know, settle all this.
Yeah.
But yeah, is it disappointing? Yes, the folks at Unity Park thrilled to death.
Oh, I know, and, and it's a great location, I'm just like, I just can't believe that we can't use our town common. And when you have four churches immediately adjacent, including congregational, they're not as immediate, but, you know, within a block, and you have public buildings, I mean, that's, you know, we've gotta figure something out for that.
Wasn't for lack of conversation.
Oh, I know, I know, and I'm not pointing anything at towards you, dude, I just really, you know, just expressing my opinion and, and to let us know what we can do to maybe facilitate that in the future.
I just wanna say thank you, David, and to the volunteers on the committee, I think on behalf of the council and the administration, uh, you hit some roadblocks, but you guys were conscientious about the design and delivering it, and you bring a ton of people from out of town and from all different states here in the town, so, uh, uh, thank you, thank you for all your diligence. You could've walked away, and you didn't, you stuck with it, and you found a great solution, so, um, I know, I appreciate, and I think everybody here appreciates it.
We appreciate the support that we get from all across the town, so thank you very much.
Yeah.
So we just need a motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to receive and file, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G one, this is the Fourth of July Committee, and this is the proposed membership list for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six, and you have a membership list recommendation from Chairwoman Tixera.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have to abstain.
Recuse?
Recuse.
Recuse.
Can we combine the two and restain?
Okay.
Counsel?
Motion to approve the proposed memberships for twenty-four, twenty-six, uh, as stated.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Short trip.
The next item on the agenda is G two, this is the Harbor Commission Advisory Committee, and this is for one term set to expire August twenty twenty-seven. You have Owen O'Rourke with interest in reappointment, Michael Cabral with interest in appointment, and Jeff Doran, also with interest in appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint Owen.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint Owen, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G three, this is the Bristol Housing Authority, this is for one five-year unexpired term set to expire January twenty twenty-seven, and we have a letter of resignation from John Faria.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on that item, I just wish to thank the other two candidates that applied. I know, you always said that at the very end, so.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, moving on, uh, make a motion to accept, uh, uh, Mr. Faria's, uh, resignation with a letter of regret and, uh, and thanks for all of the years of service that he provided to the, uh, Bristol Housing Authority.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion?
And to advertise in the local paper.
I heard that.
I did.
Yeah, outstanding. Any other discussion? I'm just gonna take a moment, John Faria, uh, has been, there's, we have a lot of phenomenal volunteers. In fact, the assistant clerk pointed out to me, was, what would you say, three hundred and seventy-five volunteers in the town? It's tremendous, um, but just taking a moment to point out, John, John has been, um, not only with the housing authority, um, but he was, uh, the Democratic Committee, um, he has been so many roles, he sat in this role. Uh, he's, uh, was a state senator, I believe.
Yes.
So he's given a lot back to the community, I just wanted to take a moment and recognize that. I know you, you did with a letter of regret and thanks, but, um, tremendous, uh, we have a lot of people like John, but John has been there a long time and just wanted to say a special thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and this is the part where I say, from, on behalf of this council, thank you to the, now I know the number, three hundred and seventy-five volunteers. Dave's a good example, he was up here talking about putting time, effort, and energy that he does not get paid for, and he's not the only one, three hundred and seventy-five approximately, right? Um, to better the town, um, and I'll use Dave as an example cuz he was here. Um, without people like him to push those things forward, um, Bristol would not be the place it is today, so this council says thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H one, this is Anthony Martini, forty-six Highlands Road, and this is an adoption of the Sohams Land Acknowledgement Resolution, this is continued from August twenty-first.
Motion to adopt the resolution. Second.
So just for clarity with, with the changes made by the solicitor?
Correct, with the, with the changes.
Just making sure.
Yep.
So we had a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I'm opposing, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, so we had four in favor, one opposed.
Yes, and just briefly, yes, the way I'm opposing is the fact that it, it, there was always unintended consequences, and obviously, the next item speaks to that, you know, I never thought, back then when I was administrator here, signing, um, the document that we did with, uh, D E M and, uh, the different agencies, that would come back to haunt us, but obviously has. And likewise, I don't wanna see that happen and pass it on to the children.
Tim, do you wanna read it?
Whereas, uh, Town Council Bristol and Rhode Island hereby adopts the following land acknowledgement resolution to welcome the Sohms, the home of the Poconouka tribe, for over ten thousand years prior to the settlers' colonization. We acknowledge that our community was part of a larger ancestral homeland of the Poconouka tribe, and we recognize that the unique and enduring relationship that exists between the indigenous people and their traditional territories. As the place of Metacoma's seat at the base of the Poconouka Mount Hope, let this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our ongoing responsibility to recognize, honor, and partner with the Poconouka tribal people for the benefit of the lands and the waters of Sohms.
Well done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H two, and this is Stephen T. O'Neil for Seventy Ferry Road, and this is in regards to the adoption of the resolution for maintenance of the Middle Passage Port Marker at Independence Park. This is also continued from August twenty-first.
So this was continued because we were looking for clarity on, uh, from the solicitor, which we did get, uh, and the, uh, sorry. So the state was looking for a resolution from the town, um, we have an agreement, as Tony pointed out a little bit earlier, um, with the state to maintain Independence Park and anything that we add to it afterwards, so. Um, and the solicitor took some time, uh, Mr. Solicitor, did you, can you just cover the basic changes for us?
Yes, um, essentially, we were just, um, pointing out that that maintenance obligation did not extend to the installation, repair, replacement, or removal of the marker itself. That still is not something the town is committing itself to, um, the responsibility. And I think there was a question about perhaps repair, and I think, I think, you know, where does maintenance end and repair begins? And, and that's a gray line, I, I think this is sufficient to basically get the point of what the town is saying that, um, you know, we're responsible for the day-to-day maintenance of it, um, but if there's anything, if something breaks on it or something like that, well, then it's not our responsibility, um, similar to what you'd have in any kind of landlord tenant or licensor, licensee, which is technically what we are with the state requiring.
So I just had, uh, one question, if like for twenty years from now, if the group is dissolved?
Yep.
And there, what happens if the marker is damaged in a storm or something of some kind, and now it's, it needs some sort of maintenance? But, I mean, it's twenty years ago, we, we adopted this.
Right, I mean, I, I.
How does that work? Does it just fall back to the town, or?
Um, I, I think as a practical matter, it's, I mean, if it's something specific to the marker, you know, I, I suppose the only question would be a question of vandalism or something.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, if it needs to be cleaned, we're probably gonna be cleaning more than one if we're sending a crew to pressure wash stuff, things like that. I think what we're talking about is, you know, if there's a big hurricane and it's knocked off the pedestal, you know, it's just.
And broken beyond repair kind of thing.
The pieces, you know, are spread all over the place, you know, we're not responsible for it at that point. Um, it's gonna be part of D O T's responsibility of overall clearing up the property, or they're gonna be turning to us to do everything. It's gonna be the whole park for us or not at all. So I think we're just making sure that we're just not taking any specific unusual responsibility for this particular marker.
Thank you. You're really pushy.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm having fun here, sir, so, um, I can, please bear with me. I'm gonna get to the specific spot, please bear with me. What?
It is agenda item H two.
Yeah, I'm there, I'm just.
And you hit that little.
Yeah, which, Andy?
Um, whereas the town of Bristol is engaged in the Bristol Middle Passage Port Marker Project, proposing to erect a memorial to those victimized by slavery in the middle passage in Independence Park, and whereas in order to facilitate this project, the Rhode Island Department of Transportation, R I dot has requested reassurance from the town.
Thank you.
That the resulting memorial erected in Independence Park as part of this project shall be maintained at the expense of the town in a manner consistent with the terms of the twenty fourteen licensing agreement regarding Independence Park, parenthesis, the licensing agreement, close parenthesis. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Bristol hereby provides assurances to R I dot that the memorial resulting from the Bristol Middle Passage Port Marker Project to be erected in Independence Park shall be maintained by the town in a manner not inconsistent with the licensing agreement. This maintenance obligation shall not extend to installation, repair, replacement, or removal of the Bristol Middle Passage Marker Project. A copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the appropriate personnel at R I dot by the town clerk.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron, to adopt as read by the solicitor. Discussion?
I think there was.
Yep, just, I want to ask the council first, discussion? No, okay.
Just very briefly, it certainly clarifies in review. And I guess we do have an obligation, and that's the why I made that statement previously.
Mr. Hewitt, you, you come up to the.
I have a couple of things to say if I can. First of all, I want to correct you, but you mentioned the Army, the Coast Guard, the Air Force. Pete Hewitt, when do you drive? I'm retired Navy. You didn't mention the Navy or the Marine Corps. I have a young son on Marine Corps too, so shame on you. Don't let it happen again, chief.
You're starting on a negative, Pete. Let's see if we can go positive.
Okay, we're going to go positive now. On Saturday, this Saturday at 4 o'clock, we're having a ceremony at the Veterans Honor Roll Garden, dedicating a bench to first responders.
Pete, if you may, does this have to?
No, is it not? Okay, I'll get, I'll get to what I really want to talk about.
Yeah, because, not because I don't want to hear that, but this is the agenda.
I got you, I got you. Back some time ago, when the marker first came up, I was opposed to it because I personally did not feel a need for heal for what happened back in the early 1800s. I, when the decision was made to place the marker at Independence Park, I objected because of this, this resolution right now. I thought that at some point in time, the town of Bristol is going to inherit or be mandated to incur taxpayer expense to maintain or do something with this marker. And it's come, the chickens have come home to roost. I appreciate what the service says in terms of the limitations on what it costs to maintain. But nevertheless, the DOT, the state somebody, has mandated now that the town, another unfunded mandate, that the town is now responsible, a private organization, a small group of private citizens, promoted this marker. At the time, I asked and made, tried to make sure that no taxpayer money was expended to build this or pay for any portion of this, of this marker. And I think they talked about a, about a $100,000 venture, which I'm glad to see we didn't, we hope, I hope we didn't allocate any taxpayers' money in the budget for this marker. But now I find myself, we, the taxpayers, are going to end up incurring a lifelong burden to maintain a marker that I don't think should have been placed at Independence Park. Had it been placed at, lived in place, a building, a facility that directly benefited from the slave trade, that would have been the best place to put it. And we wouldn't have a maintenance obligation at this state, at this time of state. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry we made this decision to place it at Independence Park. It's now going to cost us money. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other conversation from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I1. This is Town Administrator Contenti, and this is in regard to the contract award for bid 1049, Independence Park Water Quality Public Access and Boat Ramp Improvements.
Mr. Administrator.
Thank you. As you know, the bids came in for the Independence Park Boat Ramp and Water Quality Improvement projects. There are two projects that were combined. We had approximately $1.3 million on hand for that project. The lowest bidder was $1.1840,860. It's more money than we had on hand. We met several times here at Town Hall. We met on-site with our consulting engineers. We've value it engineered the project. We've scaled some areas down. We're using a different construction method that the contract that had recommended. Our engineers reviewed it, they're approving it, and we're able to save one, So what I'm asking for is that in the memo I provided, as the funding sources, I'd like to be able to use the money from the 2023 bond, which was for a number of projects. There was some flexibility there. I'd like to take the band stage funds that we're not doing and reallocate it towards the, the Independence Park project so that we can get this out, the contract awarded.
I'm in favor. I think coming off the bike path and coming onto Thane Street, first thing you see is Independence Park and that boat ramp. And it, as we all know, desperately needs a facelift. I think we can all see the water that's just sitting there, and it's just, it needs some desperate repairs. So I'm in favor of moving forward.
Second.
So I'm going to take that as a motion. I'll take also a second to support, as presented from the administrator. Discussion?
Just Mr. Chairman, the band stage project, that's on our capital projects list and everything like that, right?
Any more?
So I was just going to ask. I'm taking.
Great point, go ahead.
Is it what?
Mr. Administrator?
Does it something that gets shifted down or?
So if you recall, after the bids came in, we rejected all the bids. They were too high, we didn't have enough money. The costs just escalated for the band stage, so it didn't make fiscal sense to go forward. And that was in one of our past meetings when the bids were rejected. This project's, our timeframe would be this winter. So I'd like to get the contract awarded, and they'd like to work over the winter so we wouldn't impact the boating season, have it ready for the spring. So yeah, to answer your question, yeah, the band, to answer your question, the band stage, we don't have funding for it. It was more than, the grant was for about $200,000 in the, the, the project with engineering, the cost of the stage, the parking lot requirements, safety enhancements that the property is really owned by the state of Rhode Island. It was going to be closer to $1 million by the time we were done. So the seed money from Rhode Island Commerce, $200,000, didn't get very far.
Drop in the bucket. That's okay, you don't have to apologize to me.
All right, so we had a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I2. And this is Chairman Coluro. And this is in regard to discussion pertaining to increasing the administrator's salary for the 2526 budget.
So as you all recall, we've had this discussion. It turns out it was back on July 1st, 2019, or would have been effective July 1st, 2019. So when this would take place, it would be affected five years has been since we've adjusted this. It's always an uncomfortable conversation. There is a person sitting in that position right now, Administrator Contenti. But this is important for us to continue to adjust this. This is why it's on the agenda this evening. I included, and the clerk gave it to all of you, other communities' salaries, both appointed and elected, and included the salaries of our department heads deserving of those salaries, I may add. But you'll see that some exceed the administrator's salary. It is my hope that we can adjust the salary again for the upcoming year. My proposal would be it's 95.5 right now, or 95.4 if I'm.
95.5.
95.5, to make it 100 at the, for the 2526, and then 105 for the 2627. So not unreasonable, it needs to continue to go up. But that would represent approximately 2.5% if you take into account the total of the five years that have gone by. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That is what I'm proposing, but I, if my colleagues disagree.
Are you making?
I can, I don't typically make motions, but I'm happy to do that, and we would.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so discussion?
I just think it's in line with the other cities, the other communities when I was looking. So I appreciate that data, and I'm definitely in support.
I am surprised that Middletown is missing on that one. That seems like it would be a good comparison. Maybe Middletown's a little bit bigger than us, of course, and has a little bit more to deal with. But, you know, certainly you see some towns like East Providence at 90,000, Cumberland at 95,500, that, that seems to be very, very similar to what we're up to over here. And then North Smithfield, I think is always one I, I think I kind of gravitate toward when I'm comparing our town to others, that one's about 90,000. And yeah, I think certainly too with some of these salaries, you know, Chairman always says, hey, it's an uncomfortable, you know.
It is.
Discussion and everything like that. But, you know, if you do think about it from a little bit of a workforce development standpoint too, you want to be able to recruit talent, right? Like, so you don't, like, we're lucky that we have the administrator doing the work that he's doing here right now. But we also want to, you know, make sure that, you know, if there's other capable folks too, that they're, you know, willing to step in when, if, or when the time ever comes, that needs to happen.
I think what's interesting in this, and when you look at the salary comparison, and I didn't sit down and do it, but it'd be interesting to see the appointed versus the elected because Portsmouth over here is, I believe theirs is a town manager.
Appointed.
Appointed, yeah, 152,000. South Kingston is 178,000. I think that's a, I think that's appointed as well, mostly all of them are.
Yes.
Pawtucket is 105,000, who is elected. And North Providence is 105,000 as well, which I believe is elected, which is elected as well. So I mean, it's just interesting to see that the elected seem to be much less.
It is.
I wonder if that's because we don't want to call them a mayor. No, I'm just, you know, but seriously, I mean, it's just interesting to note that, that's all.
Well, it's interesting because I was going to actually make similar comment. And what happens is when you locate elected positions, folks are much more willing to criticize the, you know, the populace overall versus when you're appointed, it's a decision made by five individuals versus a community elected and someone.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely a disparity between those two groups. And it's just, I'm not sure what you do about it, but I mean, we don't have to worry about our administration. But it's just interesting to know.
It's a good point, and typically, the appointed positions are obviously qualification-based. That's not a slap in the face to our administrator or past administrators. It's just a requirement as an appointed position versus a, an elected position, anyone, right? Anyone that is qualified to be elected can do it. So, but I think that it's important, some great points were made. Aaron, you're talking about you, if you want to attract talent, you need to pay. Some of the salaries here for Barrington is 161,000. I'm picking the high ones on purpose. East Greenwich has already pointed out 189,000. Middle of the Road, New Shoreham at 144,000, right? So those are large salaries. But if I may take a moment here and say, those are large responsibilities. If you come to Town, Steve, I'm going to, yeah, I usually call you Mr. Administrator. At a moment, I'll call you Steve. Anybody that's sat in that seat, Tony, you were there beforehand, the amount of time that it takes, the, you're never off duty, ever. You have to deal with five jerks sitting behind this. Okay, now we're not bad. There's a lot that goes into it. So having the appropriate pay continue to adjust. It's on the lower end, as you heard the numbers, but I also don't think it's appropriate to go jump too quickly. So slowly, maturely, it's a, it's an important position, and it sounds like we're all on the same page on this. Is everybody okay with what I'm suggesting is, so in the 2526 to go to 100, and then 2627 to go to 105?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think from a budget standpoint, it's, it's, it's very responsible. And I have to do the big leaps. I think we all remember when we had to deal with the library salaries and we had to where they were not given an increase in a very, very long time, and they were artificially kept low for reasons. And we had to go into these huge increases. And it's, it's not, it's not something we want to get in the habit of. So it's better to keep it competitive, like you said, Aaron.
Yes, can I ask that you come to Little Compton and advocate for me?
Well, everybody, let's get, one sec.
Very deserving, no doubt about it. I mean, I've said that, and I agree totally, you know, we just become some complacent sometimes and just go, oh, well, that's just the way it goes. But it's good to recognize his efforts, you know.
And all efforts, your efforts beforehand, and before you and before them, so.
The positions' efforts, and if they're going to be professional and do the job well, yeah.
Well said.
Tony, we'd advocate for you.
Would you?
We would, yeah, yeah, you got us.
My name is Alan Spenn, a resident of town. I've been here for four years.
If you could state your address for the record too, please.
133 Ferry Road.
Thank you, go ahead.
And I, I think that's a lower salary, to be honest with you. I mean, I took, I've worked at credit rating agency, Fitch Ratings before, followed municipalities and enterprise systems, water systems, electric. And I know it's more complicated, but you've, you've got 20,000 people, I believe.
More than that.
And so it's a good-sized community that you have, so, and for all the services that you have to work, right? I have no problem whatsoever at that.
So I'm going to talk for Tony just for a moment, maybe you could go to Little Compton. That was really good. I'll give you the sheet.
But I think it makes sense to go forward, and you've got competent people, and you need to pay them.
Yeah, okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We'll see you in Little Compton.
Last thing, we have a motion and a second, but I did talk to the administrator prior to those numbers. And although there's justification for hire, that higher dollars there, it was a, and he was in agreement on this, it was a nice and respectful way of moving this forward. So just, so we're all on the same page. So any other discussion?
I think it's important to state that, yes, you know, currently he's sitting there. And of course, there's no competition, so we know, but we actually are proposing for the next cycle. So that it's important to state that, you know, it's not because, you know, but rather, you know, whoever would be filling the shoes would be reset.
So our charter requires that we make this decision prior to the next term. You may or may not know, there is no, the administrator does not have a challenger for his seat. So, but regardless, this is how this needs to work. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is K1. This is Bristol County Water Authority Board of Directors, Trityown Monthly Meeting for July 30th, 2024.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, to receive and file, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is K2. This is the Bristol County Water Authority Board of Directors, Trityown Monthly Report for August 2024.
Motion to receive and file?
Second, with thank you as always, you know, providing the information to keep us current.
So motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I don't have anything else on the agenda.
That's it? So normally we would go into executive session, nice job everyone.
We don't have that either.
There was no public comment, correct? Prior to the meeting? No, okay. All right, just need a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn?
No. There is, but our requirement is that you need to sign in prior to.
You did?
I left your voicemail.
I'm sorry, I, if you did, I'm sorry, I didn't get the, I didn't get the voicemail.
Because you made a call, and I have no reason to think otherwise.
The Saturday at 4 o'clock at the Bristol Veterans Honor Roll Garden, there'll be a ceremony presented where the, there'll be a first responders bench dedicated to firefighters, police officers, emergency medical personnel, and military. It's being presented by the Bristol County Concerned Citizens and the Friends of Mike Burns because Mike Burns was the inspiration behind this bench. There'll be a, it'll be a simple ceremony, it won't be too long, but it will be at 4 o'clock. Certainly, the public is welcome, and hope everybody, hope you get a good turnout.
Read it again, where is it, please?
At the Veterans Garden by the Burnside Building on Hope Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So council, I just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.